...this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. We have a quorum. And first item of business is a discussion item. We'll get an update on the Bigwood Event Center. We'll call on our finance director, Bill Somer. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Your Honor and Council. Thank you. Yet we were requested to bring you an update, probably long time in coming as we have been, you know, trying to get that thing back on the road. So we're going to go through a PowerPoint this morning. It might look like I'm reading the PowerPoint to you because I probably will be. Because I want to make sure I don't miss some of the information. A special thank you to Sandy who put a lot of this together. Great information in here. So we'll just take some time, go through it, explain where we've been, and we'll see what the future looks like. So a little bit of history on the Bigwood Event Center. The Bigwood was constructed with funding from three different sources. So the state of Minnesota, we received some bonding dollars for one and a half million dollars. Seven hundred and fifty thousand then came from private donations, and then seven hundred and fifty thousand from the liquor store at that time, from the reserves. The center opened its doors in 2021 and was operated for 20 years by an external management company. Now, that management company ran the hotel next door, also ran the restaurant and bar, which is key because, of course, we don't have that property. We don't have that restaurant kitchen. We don't have that bar. We don't have the staff. I mean, you could see how that management company intertwined everything together. And that was the intention from the very beginning, to have the flexibility of using that staff. They were the only caterer, so exclusive onsite catering and bar service was only from, you know, next door at that restaurant and bar. So due to financial concerns, you know, certainly made worse by the pandemic, the management company discontinued their agreement with us in 2021. That's when the agreement was up. So they didn't end early or anything. It was up in April of '21, I believe, and they chose not to renew it at that time. The city has then assumed, you know, management of the facility. We shuttered it then until reopening it in 2022. So it was closed basically during 2021. All right, so some challenges after that. So the city, we contracted with a hospitality management company to help us think about getting that up and running. And if you recall back, we showed some projections at that time, knowing we would lose money for at least the first three years, hopefully getting to a break-even point after three years. That relationship was short-lived. We discontinued that relationship with that management company in the first quarter of '22. So we started with them and then kind of ended it right away. And then we had a newly hired operations manager. His employment then was terminated also in that summer of '22, and basically remaining staff members resigned at that time as well. We had some issues going on then, and we terminated that relationship. So then staff covered operations until an event center coordinator was hired. Then in November of 2022, she subsequently left in April of '23. So we've had a lot of turnover. There's no problems with her. It just wasn't the right fit for her with that style of business. Profitability, of course, was hindered by the lack of this continuity of staff. I mean, that first year of 2022, we were always kind of in an upheaval. I have to give credit to Mike Hartwell at that time and our public work staff. Really, we're helping to run that and run events. Our public work staff would go out, set up the facility, clean up the facility. I know Mike was out there some during events. So we were just trying to keep things afloat, you know, with the events that we did have at that time. Yeah, certainly profitability hindered by all of that. And then, of course, the COVID impact, corporate meetings, weddings, social events, were not happening very much. You know, we were seeing that everything shut down. People weren't meeting together. Things were happening remotely. Okay, now a little bit of good news. Brooke Solheim, and I think she may, her Brandon will probably be here after a bit. So they'll be available for some questions if you have some directly for them. But she joined us at the Bigwood as the new event center coordinator, along with Brandon Curry, our liquor store manager. We put this under his view in April of '23. So the immediate focus at that time was establishing, you know, some sound business practices. Remember, cities, you know, typically don't run event centers. This was new for us. We had contracted this out the whole time. So we wanted them to help us get our feet on the ground. As you know, Brandon has a good history of running our liquor stores. He's an entrepreneur kind of person and runs our liquor stores very well. Good profitable businesses there. Continue to develop relationships with preferred caterers. So as I said in the past, that was all done with the restaurant onsite. Now we were developing relationships with caterers, fee structures, and how all that looked. Then refurbished the bars, and then resumed the internal bar service. That was just recently did we resume that. Again, you have to have employees to work, you know, bartenders to work those as well. And we didn't have any, basically. They had left in 2022. So refurbished those, and that came back onsite. Up until this point, it was done through the external caterers. They were supplying that. Website relaunched, updated in May of '23. Daily Journal column in July of '23 to share, you know, the staffing changes and then to start promote local bookings. Brandon made a guest appearance on Find It in Fergus Falls in August of '23. We looked to our technology upgrade. Remember, we completely updated that facility with technology. As the technology was 20 years old, it was failing. So we used the ARPA funding to pay for that. So we put in state-of-the-art audiovisual technology. That was just completed in October. If you recall, lots of backorder. We couldn't get the actual supplies, the actual equipment, to be installed. We did a partial, I think you remember, we had a retreat out there as a city council and had some of the audiovisual working, but now it's completely finished. So upgrades significantly improved the overall functionality of the meeting spaces. So a few bullet points on that. Ability to conduct events in the ballroom as well as all the individual standalone meeting rooms, you know, when you break that into the various configurations. Touchscreen control panels to allow easy access to the screens. Projectors, speakers, audio. We have 12 wireless microphones. And then speakers distributed throughout the facility. And then new projectors and screens in each of the rooms. And again, can use the ballroom as a whole or broke up into all the individuals. And then the two rooms off the pre-function area as well. I think that whole technology probably cost about $330,000, about that. Again, we funded that through the ARPA funding. So additional features, web conferencing and streaming capabilities. You can record events, active listening for hearing impaired, the ability to stream music and make general announcements over the speakers in the pre-function space, so out front. So the new technology was utilized and promoted at the recent Fergus Falls refresh. I know several of you were there to showcase that space and to promote bookings. And then events were followed up with a Thanksgiving email blast. That went out through the chamber and, you know, to encourage our local businesses to book your next events at the Bigwood Event Center. So we certainly welcome and we look for our local community first to be out there and then getting the word out elsewhere. So going forward, staff is focusing on promoting the Bigwood as West Central Minnesota's premier meeting and event facility. We all know that is a good facility. It's in nice shape. We updated carpets, the wall finishes. I know the wood finishes out in the pre-function area. So that was, was that right before COVID? Did we do that or?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. So the facility looks nice. It's, you know, it is in good condition. So some of the things doing then as we look to the future, updating the promotional pieces. So Gene Bowman is working with Brooke Solheim on updating our promotional pieces. We want to add some new photography, create a professional, uniform look to that, to the marketing materials. Utilize our existing client list. So we have all the information from all the previous bookings over the last 20 years because we maintain that same system that managed the facility. So we have those past contacts, go through those, you know, certainly they've changed, but it's worth looking through and see if we can get some people back in. Exploring paid listings at various, you know, wedding sites, whatnot. So we make sure we're front and center out there. And then utilizing Facebook more to, you know, build more of that awareness in our local community. Okay, so event counts. What did this look like over the last number of years? You can see from 2015 through 2020, you have three, you know, in the 300s of events. And then '18, '19, it started trailing down. The previous management company was having financial difficulties with this prior to COVID starting. You know, we met with them several times about that. I know over the years, we made some concessions with them, where we did some of the maintenance on the buildings. But utilities, you know, heating that facility even when it's not booked is a significant expense. So they were seeing a decrease in profitability as they were seeing events trickle down. And of course, 2020 hit, big drop there. They still did have some events through 2020. 2021, then we were shuttered, so very few events there. At '15, 2022, we're reopening as the city. We kind of talked through that. You can see back up to 107 events, '23, 119. And so far, we have about 50 on the books for '24, but of course, continuing to look for more business and build that up. But just gives you a little picture of the impact of when everything stopped and then trying to restart it. And of course, people do things a bit different now, you know, you're not holding as many conferences, we're seeing. But we are getting some weddings back. Brooke has had some very successful weddings out there, and she just does an awesome job managing those events. All right, our last slide here shows the financial picture. So our 2023 budget, you can see, I'm going to drop right down to the transfers in there. Second to the bottom of 110,500. We were planning moving from the general fund, 110,500 in here to balance operations because we projected we were going to lose money. 2023 forecast, it looks like we're going to come in a little bit better than that with a transfer needed of $89,812. I think so far this year, I've transferred $50,000 over there. So we'll look at this. You'll probably see another transfer come through in December on the resolution of accounts to kind of balance those operations out. But operating revenues, you know, we came in fairly close to the budget. Our expenses then are down a bit from what we had projected, leading us to that transfer. Shows the variance. Now, the 2024 budget, we put some projections together, looking at the operating revenues of 205,500. You can see the various wages benefits. So again, we have one employee out there right now in Brooke, and Brandon, part of his time is spent there. So we're allocating a bit of his time in 2024. We haven't allocated, have we done any of Brandon's time in up until now? So '24, we'll start plugging his time into that. Right now, the liquor store has been fully supporting all of that. So we're trying to get a real accurate picture of what we're spending there, which then the transfer in would be 124,000. Brought to the tax levy committee, we're planning to bring that from the liquor store, not the general fund. So liquor store revenue is funding that 124. And I think that is our last slide. There we go. Sandy, did I miss anything?
No, I'll just say on behalf of Brooke, she maybe wasn't able to be here because.
She's on her way. She had a few things to set up before she came.
Right, she had a big event this morning. We actually had talked about having this meeting at the Bigwood because it would have been great to actually show you the technology because it is really amazing what can happen between the rooms and that kind of thing with this event that she has. They have the following.
And I think the event started at 6:30 this morning, or she needed to be there at 6:30, so.
Two more switches of the day, so it's a full day.
Yeah. So again, this is what's in the 2024 budget that was brought to you in September, and we're bringing back then on Monday, the 4th.
One other ARP-funded project was we installed UV lighting for disinfection in all of the HVAC units.
Oh, okay. Thanks. I forgot about that.
Question. Are you ready for some questions from the council?
Absolutely.
I'm sure there will be. So let me just. Thanks, Brandon, for all your work out there, and it's been great. I've been out there for two events lately, and it looks great. The staff is friendly, so first of all, thanks for that. Looking at the 2024 budget, looking back to 2020 and 2019 when things were, it's not on the screen, but it looks like number of events, about 125 right before COVID. We're back to that in 2023, and we're still at an operating loss. So I guess my question is, two questions. What is it going to take to make that $120,000 deficit break even? Like, is it double that events or how many more events? And is that realistic post-COVID from what you're seeing based on, you know, the trend pre-COVID? Does that make sense?
I'll pipe in one thing. And Sandy, when you look month by month, November, I'll talk about a little bit. November was a busy month where we actually, did we break even or even make some?
Probably break even, and then June.
Yeah.
Well, I'd love to answer as a precursor if I can. We're looking at just event.
Come on up.
Sorry, I want to, Brandon, the critic was down this morning, so I was running it too good. So, sorry, I'm scrambling.
Here, I'll move this, Brandon.
You know, looking at just event count, if you want event count to pump back up to 331, event counts can be drastically increased. If you're looking at the previous numbers of what I received, you're looking at a lot of dinners, a lot of hotel hosted events, three, four, five meals a year, Mother's Day brunches, Father's Day, you name it. And talking with the staff, Mike is the name, he's retiring in like a year and a half or two. He said a lot of times, they just didn't make any money. And then nowadays, with food costs the way they are, we just kind of sat down and say, we're going to have to charge $50 a plate to get into a Mother's Day brunch. And then even that, even if we fill up to the brim, yeah, we could have a lot of more events, but we're not making money on them. They're just not the profitable events that they used to be. And even so, they had five to 10 employees rocking them, you know, with multiples. So we'd have to sub it all out anyway and even just take a small portion on that. So we kind of said, yes, that's a large number of events, but you're just looking at event count, not profitability off of all these events. And to that point, I even asked him, I think, how many years ago it was, it was Hairball in town, but five, four, five years ago now. He had like $10,000 and it cost him, and five different bars, and then the amount of people he had there was just extraordinary. And I said, well, how much you make on something like that? Maybe we need to go that route. And he said, I don't make any lost money on the deal. So it was great for my hotel. It was great for everything else I have going on, but it's not, it wouldn't have been great as a specific venue. So exploring options like that are not necessarily in our wheels because we can't have, we have Brooke and myself, and we don't have five to 10 others that can support that. So it would be helpful, it would be helpful to game go with an event like that versus us seeking out Hairball, you know, or an event like this. So when you're looking at just overall event counts, yes, we could pump them up to the roof and see the revenue the same if that's what you'd like to see, but we want the ones that are profitable. We want the ones that we can do and that we're capable of. So what we targeted is first corporate, you know, we thought that corporate was lacking. Everybody in town, let's start with, let's look at the outer power of the world. If you're having meetings, where are you having them? If not, if not at the Bigwood, where at, and why are we not the ones, you know? And you start knocking off the list on all the major ones in town, and then you work your way outward. And then to address weddings, weddings are profitable, but when you're dealing with one person and no long-term expansion strategy, you got to work your way into it. So as of now, we are taking every single wedding we can take. If we can get back up to two weddings a month in 2024, I could probably break even on an. But I can't guarantee weddings. I can guarantee alcohol sales almost, but I can't guarantee weddings. But what I do think, and this is speaking with my wife last night, I'm very optimistic with the facility. I kind of think it goes with a little bit ebbs and flows, that it's the cool thing and it's not the cool thing. It's cool to have outside weddings for a while, and grand views in Brainerd is really cool, but when you go to five to 10 weddings there in the course of a couple summers, is it still cool? Is it still the place to be? And now we're coming into a year where people are going to be counting pennies and looking at their budgets a lot. And we are the most affordable venue in 50, 60 miles. So we are technically competing with Fargo and the Alexandriars of the world, but are we pulling them? Potentially, potentially in 2024, we could because we are 400-plus capacity available. We are the most inexpensive, but when I go to post stuff like, hey, we're the cheapest around, we're the best budget place. My wife quickly corrects me and says, no, that's not what a bride wants to hear. She wants to hear the different scenarios. So that's where my expertise, you know, I know what I need, but needs, but it necessarily doesn't necessarily always, I need some help on some of those. But and then looking at beyond six months, I mean, I know we discussed, you know, what can we do for the next six or what are we going to do, and then take another look at it. Well, we have three, four weddings beyond that six months. So if we have any inclinations that this is not a future procedure, just politely would be nice to know that, hey, that we're going to stop after this time and take a readdress because I don't want to book weddings beyond our dates that we know we're going to be open for sure. That just is, you know, courtesy to our citizens of Fergus. So I'm optimistic. I really think that, and then you got to have to roll with the punches. Certain things like that we've tried and addressed that were not profitable, we've gone different routes. We are not, we go back and forth whether we are event hostess or just a host. Do we create our own events, like the liquor event? It's all of our own. Nobody comes to us like an outdoor ice fishing show would come to us. We create our own, and we have our own wristbands. It's our own profit. Or are we just the event center? I also throw in questions like community center. So if any of our customers in any of our wards came to us and said, hey, I would just, any discounts? Can you guys offer discounts? Well, the easy answer at the liquor store is we have a solid discount policy. There is no if, ands, or buts. But is it a community center in a sense where they can afford $1,500 on a wedding? And if it's not the full price, should I still book it? Because I'm not, it's not a private event. So do we want the $1,500, or do we want nothing, or do we want to stick with our guns? So those are the things that we're kind of tackling, and we haven't had a whole lot of those kind of instances. But they're obviously questions that should be, should be looked at, and the staff have been great to help me with those and one-time things and how we can go around it or possibly, you know, help them out with some different areas. So each week, it seems like we're just kind of molding and going with the path that works well with us and by sticking with the least spending plan, I guess. And to be even more lengthy, looking at things in my list, Bill really went down on the list of things of our expenses. I mean, when I say go down the list, he sent me our airmark invoice and said, you know, we're spending a thousand bucks a month on our linens at the place. Is that actually needed? Morning, Brooke. Is that actually needed? And we went down and we sat down with the airmark guy, and yes, it was needed. And I actually, I think I took away one mop head because we tried to save 10 bucks or whatever it was. And then Brooke said, I need that mop head back. We need two or three. So we're really, you know, looking at everything we can. And it's, it just costs a lot to heat and cool the place. And, you know, you take just those out of the factor, and you have Brooke's salary, and that's about it, you know? Advertising is zero to minimal as of now, so, sorry, I get lengthy.
No, that's okay.
Thanks, Brandon.
So we'll let you have more discussion here if you like. We have made a conscious effort, you know, we are keeping staff to a minimum right now. So it's kind of like, you know, we want to get some profitability going before we would look at adding more staff, so. So other thoughts or questions?
I just have a question, Bill. What was the name of the company, the hospitality management company?
LHR.
And what is there, what are they all involved with? I mean, anything around this area anymore or not?
I think Minneapolis.
Minneapolis.
And their hotel management, but also they did do some entertainment.
Yeah.
Okay.
So heavy on the hotel management side, but they did have experience in event centers.
Right. Is anybody tracking what they're doing now?
No.
Because, you know, evidently, that's what they do for a living, you know?
But we did end that relationship.
I know, but I'm just saying, kind of keep an eye from a distance to see what they're doing and take some cues from that maybe because, you know, the city's not in the hospitality business really. I mean, you know what I mean? It's not our thing. I guess that's kind of a concern I have is some expertise on that. Yep, go ahead.
If I may, just in the interim, the answers sometimes we get from the larger groups are how to expand and how to hire five more people and enter bar, going and have 20 weddings a month. So certain things that we're looking at is CBI event center down in CBI. They have a municipal-run event center, and they're very successful at weddings. So what they do, they don't have a large town, but they're wedding after wedding after wedding after wedding. So still spending extra money and going to the hospitality group and them saying, hey, you need to hire three more people and spend $50,000 advertising. I think what we've been talking about and I even have it in the books for April is to run down a CBI, talk with the manager and say, what are you guys doing right? What are you doing wrong? Because you are a municipal event center that is our size. So that is more comparable to me versus calling the big dogs. And yeah, if we get to that level, then we can call them the top.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying call them. I'm just saying kind of watch what they're doing. What, you know, what's it trending to? What's the trends in that?
Andrew may have more to say with that. He.
Yeah, I just want to add too, just for the council's knowledge that when we went with this LHR firm, we actually met with several hospitality companies. We reached out to probably a half dozen that we could identify in this region, and two of them wanted to speak more about the opportunity. One was the company that was operating the Sanford Center in Pomigey at the time.
Venue Works.
Venue Works, yes. They've since switched companies up there because they didn't think that relationship was going well. The other one was LHR, and LHR's bread and butter is really hotels and resorts. I just pulled up their website, and, you know, their portfolio is like six hotels, seven hotels. They had a little bit of experience in this arena, but we figured at the time, since they had more than us, because I completely agree with you, we are not in this business, and we haven't been until now. We figured any guidance they could give us would be the official guidance. And within just a couple of months, it proved that their philosophy and how they treat clients and customers and caterers did not align with how the city would expect those relationships to be formed. I won't go into any more detail on that. It was evident early on that their aggressive approach is not going to work at Fergus Falls, and we were burning bridges quickly. So I think it's wise to continue to keep an ear to the ground on how event centers across the state are progressing or working, and we'll continue to do that. But I wouldn't invest in this company going forward, just to make that clear.
I guess that's not what I'm getting at as far as, you know, getting, trying to get them back or something like that. I just think that, you know, I guess what makes us think that we can do it, and we don't have a background. It's like me trying to run a restaurant. I wouldn't know anything about it. I know how to eat the food, but I don't know anything about running the restaurant.
So when we started all this, when we took over, like Brandon bringing up Sleepy Eye, they're the most like us, and we did reach out to them. So we talked with their manager down there. We've talked with their people at the city as well. So they were a help as we went, that's kind of our model is built off of, you know, using the caterers because they use catering and very similar to us. So we have talked with Sleepy Eye. We're of course supportive of you guys heading down to Sleepy Eye. Good to go see that and.
The other address is that, yes, if you have a perfect event planner that is four-tier courtyard, Marriott, Hotel of Fargo experience, bring them in. We'll take it for sure, but there is no body knocking on the door. And assuming if there are, we're going to have to pay them a lot.
Yeah.
And so Brooke and I don't pretend to be anything that is strapped. Prior, the liquor store had worked at Bigwood Events and then for six years bartending and working events. And myself, I work with the same exact liquor and wine distributors, food distributors somewhat. And then in turn, it's a lot of our same customers that were used with the store. So there is some carryover, even though we don't have an expertise in event center coordinating. So as I told the city, if you find someone, yes, definitely. But we have not had even one person with a strong, strong, I can come in and show you how to run this place and do it. It'd be more of a lateral move and this can work. And then a year ago, a year goes by, then you switch management and it just doesn't gain ground. Whereas this is, we're not going anywhere. So again, if you find someone, you know, I don't want to replace myself, but you know, that's.
I mean, I applaud your efforts. Don't get me wrong there at all. You know, and, you know, talking about Sleepy Eye, what's like their profitability on that?
We'd have to ask.
Oh, okay.
And that's what we're talking about, and you have to ask the person that I'll go down and at least discuss or see where they're at. But I look at their website a lot, and they post a lot, a lot of weddings. For the town of their size, the amount of weddings they have is just over the top. So they're pulling from all these small towns around that are not, so.
And on a side note with that, when we talked with Sleepy Eye about that, they're a newer facility, and very much the community wanted it. They got behind it. And they were very, have very much been in a honeymoon period of that too, where people are, you know, they are using it a lot.
Right. They're supporting it.
They're supporting it, and it's newer and, you know, kind of like we did when we built it. You know, that was the wedding place to go. And, you know, just another plug for Brooke. We hear such good things about the events she runs. So she is running awesome events, and that is, we're so thankful, and that is good.
So I think maybe what we could.
So I, I think maybe what we could do, you know, you talked about like obviously approaching the businesses in town. Maybe, maybe it's inviting them out, I mean, I think a couple of like open house things where, you know, because usually there's one person, you know, in, in most organizations that organizes that stuff. And if you can find that sort of person and invite them out and actually show them the improved technology, you know, and let them almost play with it.
Sure.
You, you might have a better chance that then it's like if they, if they need to hold a meeting, they, they know with confidence that that place can actually fulfill the need. Because now, well, as Brooke moves, I'm, I also have a meeting at the Big Wood today. And, and basically, you know, half of the people that will be at the meeting will not be physically in the room. And if the technology doesn't work or it lets you down, then that's embarrassment and we're not going to use the place again. Because, you know, because it's a mark against you. So, you know, I think if we can get people to go out there and actually prove that, you know, it functions and, and you can have a team's call that interconnectively connects people from, you know, across wherever, that, to build that confidence that it's, it actually functions.
Good point.
Amir had to leave, so I'm going to need to step in now.
Okay.
And thank you, Bill. I don't know if there's a lot more that we're going to be able to add. This isn't going to be, I don't think that we're going to be managing the place by committee here, but we sure appreciate the update today. I think that the intention here was simply to inform and, and bring us up to date on things. But there is no action expected or any kind of, you know, motions or decisions to be made today. So I think that with that, we can say thank you very much, we appreciate the news today and we'll look forward to really good things. Thank you, Brandon and Brooke for being here today. Next on our agenda, Brian Yavero has some news for us regarding the Day Lagoon Park improvements. Take it away, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, honor and good morning. Since the voters approved the local option sales tax projects, one for the aquatic center and the other for the Day Lagoon Park improvements. That, the Day Lagoon project has entered final design for the campground and utility improvements, which are planned to be competitively bid this spring. The new softball and baseball lighting replacements are intended to be funded with the same funding source through the utility improvements as well. However, these can be done in our separate procurement process. Because of this, a lighting quote was procured from Musco Lighting, which is approved by Sourcewell, which is a state approved cooperative service. This consisted of the removal and replacement of lighting systems for the softball, which we refer to as the wagon wheel, and then Legion and Farmer's baseball field. The pricing for each is listed on the attached quote that's included in your packet.
Brian, could you speak up just a little, please?
Certainly. So I just want to go over to just, no problem. On the second page on the budget as well, now it seems to be working. On the second page on the budget, I just want to note the overall budget of $5.2 million. There's items number one, two and three. Item one, the campground master plan updates, the sewer and water extensions and the concessions and restrooms. Of those items, those are, can be packaged up and competitively bid. Lighting number, item number four, which is lighting in amount of 1,373,000 is, can be procured at direct procurement, which is consistent of the Musco. So their Musco's quote that was procured was used to prepare this budget as you can see here. As we know, as we're aware, inflation is impacting many customers. Therefore, approving the softball lighting now at $743,459 allows Musco to hold their pricing for the remaining portion, which is Legion and Farmer's Field until spring, which otherwise would expire here within 30 days. And discussions with Musco indicates that there will be a price increase. So they are willing, if the city is willing to proceed with this. This will also give us an opportunity to mitigate if we start with the wagon wheel, which is the four softball fields that were consisting of, that I'm requesting the current action of. The contractor has indicated they could possibly start with removal and installations to mitigate any interference with operations of next year. And this will also finally give us more options in the springtime by accepting this, these lighting bids right now for the softball field in consideration of the overall budget with all the bid alternates that we're looking to propose with the base bid. So at this time is what I'm requesting to accept a Musco Sports lighting quote in the amount of $743,459 for the softball fields. Now, open up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brian. Can we have a motion to get this on the table?
I'll move.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Second, thank you, Tom. Any discussion then, any questions for Brian? I guess I got one for you, Brian. And again, you had mentioned how we're taking a recommendation for 743,000 and yet their total bid would be the 1.3 some million. So breaking it into two pieces at this point locks us in for pricing, but it doesn't commit us to doing the lighting for the Farmer's Field or Legion Field until sometime next spring, when we would then either go forward or not with a, accepting some future price deal, right?
Correct, it doesn't commit us right now to the Farmers other than holding the pricing.
So with those, you had mentioned bid alternates. So those would then end up in a package of bid alternates that go with the campground and other work that's going to be done out there as a full package for us to kind of choose from the menu.
Correct, yeah, although they're not part of the bid package on it with the alternates and everything, it'll be, it'll be presented to you in the overall budget. So we can make those determinations at that time.
Okay. The, if for some reason at that time, then we decided not to do the other portions of either Farmer's Field, Legion Field or both, that wouldn't affect at all what we would choose to do now, right? This part will happen if we go forward with it and then that becomes optional essentially. But we've got a lock on the pricing that's committed to at this point.
Correct.
Okay, I think I understand it. Any further questions regarding this item today?
Was, was this part of the, from the vote from, so this was included in that?
Yes, yes, it was, correct.
With no further discussion, then we can vote on bringing this to the council at our next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Don't believe we have any additional items for the agenda today? Scott Rachels?
Guy and I have been talking about a couple of things on roads and I just talked to Brian this morning a little bit about it, about closing a couple of roads, which are very low impact, I'll say. The road behind, Bill, or Brian informed me it's called Washington Avenue behind the, we've talked about this behind the city garage. We've seen some people back there four-wheeling and climbing the hills and stuff. And I don't think it's a, I think it's a liability on us and I don't think that road is a necessary road. It's a convenience road, but not a necessary road. So I think it's something we should talk about in the future about how we could close it, if we want to close it. If we're going to put up gates to still have the city be able to use it. I think it'd be a, a good thing for us, probably help us out on our budget, maybe a little. The other closure is South Union, the last block, which is in my ward over there. I've had a couple of neighbors ask me about it because of the condition of it. They either want to get it paved or not be able to use it because it is a nightmare if you live over in that area. It's a, it gets pretty washboardy and it's pretty rough and it's.
You mean the gravel portion?
The gravel portion of it, yeah. The last gravel portion, which is, nobody lives on it.
Yeah, there's one, one house on the left.
The Helen property is on Buse, don't you? But they have, they have a driveway on a back drive with it, they think they use more than anything, but nobody else does. And so I just either looking to get some direction or ideas of either closing it or going through and doing something with it. Because it's like I was telling, we just, it's a lot of work on that thing.
I use that road quite often to go out to the dump.
Right. And I mean, it's, 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 it's gets used, but it's.
Landfill.
It's. It's, if you, if you don't use that, you go down to Tar Road, it's, it's two blocks kind of out of your way to, to use another road to go that way. So it's just, it's just something I want to throw on the radar. Some people have complained that I live on that end of the road, on that end about, and there was two semis that were stuck last year. I seen buyers coming with her to get it out in the wintertime because the road isn't plowed wide enough. They try to get through there and they get stuck going down or coming, I can't remember what it was, but, I don't know. It's just something to talk about if it's something we want to do.
Is the Washington, is that one paved or is that the gravel?
Gravel.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
That's the one over by, by the railroad tracks coming back in the back end.
Yeah, it's linked to kind of like.
And I know one of the questions, one of the questions is it's, it's also a trailhead, I think it is, they call, is that they call it for parking?
Yeah, it is.
For snowmobiles? And so I wouldn't, you know, I don't want to close it this year because that's on there, it's on their map. But it's something we need to talk about in the future. If that's, we've talked about it five, six years ago and it kind of threw a big wrench in the fire. But now that we've been seeing all this liability stuff going on, I think it'd be a, a good idea to look at it, so.
So what you're saying, they're, they're four-wheeling on those like gravel piles and the crushed asphalt?
Crushed asphalt and stuff and it's kind of a, I know when I was a youngster, it used to be a fun road. So I'm not going to go any further on that one. So anyway, just, just to put that out there, I don't know what action we could take on it, just to maybe get the conversation going is all I wanted to do.
I think it's good to bring that up and it's probably something that's going to end up on Brian's lap as we consider our various road projects around town. So something to, how would we put it, Brian? Put it under advisement for the engineering department to consider with the list of other projects for the streets and road improvements in town. And then as we have other projects, maybe there's a way to incorporate, you know, one of these with it when we're in the neighborhood, so to speak, like we often.
I'm not advocating for asphalt by any means, I don't, it would be nice, but I don't know, we would be 100% liable, I think, for it because I don't think there's.
Nobody to assess along the way?
Nobody to assess. And so that would be a pretty expensive project.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Lynn, any announcements today?
No.
Okay. Appreciate your time today. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.